I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight to represent the citizens of our great city. Lord, we ask that you watch over our family members, friends, residents of our city and our state as we make it out of this spike in the pandemic, that we all make it out of here healthy, Lord. Lord, we ask that you keep our residents, that you watch over our residents as we progress through this year, and that we have blessings in our city. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kevin. And while you were praying, I remembered I had intended to mention this sometime tonight, but I'll go ahead and do it before I call the meeting to order while I'm thinking of it. We've lost, Springdale's lost a couple of men who have been very, have given a lot to the city. Ted Wiggins, a former council member, passed away, and need to remember Kay and his family. And I think Ted was on the council for 14 years, I think, I read. So, and then, and then retired Battalion Chief Quinn Roberts, I think the services for both these men are on Thursday. And Quinn, great guy, and we're going to miss him, but he was a, he was a great member of our fire department and continued to be a great supporter of the department in Springdale. So just wanted our folks to know that if you hadn't heard. So, anyway, with that said, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting at the Springdale City Council. This is a Tuesday, January 25th, 2022 meeting, and I'll start by asking our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Kevin Flores?
Here.
Randall Harriman?
Here.
Mark Fugierus?
Here.
Ernest Cate?
Here.
All right, thank you. We do have large, we do have large print agendas up there. Wyman's got them, if that, or extra copies of the agenda, if that would be helpful to anyone. Feel free to get one. This, we're at item five on the agenda right now, comments from our citizens. If we have residents that would like to address the council, we ask that you go to the microphone, please state your name and address, and we ask that you keep your comments brief. And this time is for, to bring any item before the council that is not already on tonight's agenda. So if you've got an item that's not on tonight's agenda, yes, sir, go ahead.
My name, my name is Mitchell Brown, 1445 Beverly, Springdale, Arkansas. I was wondering about, before the pandemic started, I brought, we came in front of you about the homeless, and I was wondering if what you guys are doing about it. Last I heard that you guys are moving them to Fayetteville.
Well, Seven Hills is the, that's the, that's where most of them in northwest Arkansas go. We do have a, we do have some plans in place to build a facility that will help transition, the opportunity to transition some of our homeless to, to, while they get on their feet, get a job, get a, get a, transition to a regular place, and, but that's, that hasn't come together yet. We're working on it, and hopefully, I don't know, Patsy, you think we'll have something on that maybe this year as far as moving forward with it? Oh, no, no, but yeah, okay, thank you.
And here's another thing, too.
Okay.
The seniors, there's a senior bus that comes around, and I found out that they have to pay to get on the senior bus.
The seniors, from the senior center?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, they have to pay, I heard that they have to pay to ride that bus, ride the senior bus.
Okay, I don't, I don't know, I'll check into that.
All right.
Sure will.
Thank you.
That doesn't sound quite right.
No.
But I, I'll, I'll check into it. Depends on where you're going. I mean, are they going to the senior center?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, all right, well, we'll check into that, thank you.
Mayor, I just asked Glory, she said they don't have to pay to ride the bus.
Okay, so there you go. Sir, do you hear that? There you go, see how quick that was? Colby's got the quickest fingers. Yeah, yeah, thank you. All right, all right, any other public comment concerning an item that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item eight, proceed, no, I'm sorry, approval of minutes. You've had an opportunity to look over the minutes, I'm going to come back to him. You had an opportunity to look over the minutes, and if there's no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right. Scott, I jumped over you there, but come on, give us a quarterly economic report. Scott Edmondson from the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mayor Sprouse. Yeah, I left a copy of the fourth quarter report with you. Things are quite busy on the economic development front. We're working with several companies looking for locations. These range anywhere from industrial property, we also got some for, whether it be manufacturing, distribution, or warehouse, and then also with, with restaurant chains that we're working with. New job numbers were good, the last job numbers that we had came through the end of November, so there'd been 2,830 new jobs created in Springdale and through November of 2021. And our sales tax numbers really looking well, finished the year 12% over 2020 for, for the total year, it was 15.9%. December's number was 15.9% over December of 2020. I did skip over our unemployment rate, 1.5% as of November 30th, which is third lowest in the state. So you'll see that on our utilities, the electrical customers in Springdale increased by nearly 1,200 in 2021. So, also at the chamber, we're working with a group for the Ascender Minority Seminar Series that will begin Thursday night here at the chamber office, starts at 5:30. And we have, I think, close to 30 people signed up to, to join us for that, for that event. Veronica Garcia in our office, she has worked to organize that, and we, this is a series that'll continue for several months for the next, I think there's three total in this series that run through April or May. So, construction projects continuing through, throughout the city with the new Chick-fil-A on the west side of Burger King getting close to being open, Williams Tractor Facility is getting close to being open as well, they're along I-49, the new Caliber Collision that's located behind Whataburger, that is now open, and they're, they're a pot stop, they're a chain of, they have over 1,400 locations in over 40 states, so they've got their new facility open. And then, Traveling Public, excuse me, Emma Avenue downtown is really coming along nicely, and the Traveling Public area, some of the retail spaces now, leasing has begun on that, so.
Great.
If there's any questions, please let us know, but things, things are going good, so.
You mentioned last year's sales tax and how we finished up in December, we just got the numbers yesterday, and for January, we were up almost 20%, 19, over 19%. So.
Great news, great news on the sales tax front. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Scott. All right, now we're at number eight, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, counsel?
I move for A and B.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second for both A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell? Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
Chief, would you and Kat like to meet me at the podium? Yeah, come on. I won't, you don't have to talk, I won't, I won't make it hard on you. Well, Chief Peter's last day is 31st, which is Monday? Monday. And I know we're all going to miss him, he's done an outstanding job, been with the department since early 90s? 91. And, but, he, he's retiring soon enough where he can go do something else, I'm sure, find something he enjoys, and, and he deserves that. So, so I wanted to just take a, just take a few minutes tonight and give you an opportunity, and the people who may be watching an opportunity to, to recognize him, and, and certainly his wife, too. Kat, you know, she, anybody in that position doesn't, doesn't do it alone without a lot of support, and support from their family foremost. So, so I'm going to, Mike, I'm going to give you something, you've probably seen these before, but this one's yours, got your name on it. We have a local artist that works in glass, and, and this is just a little, a small token for, to thank you for your years of service, and, and I know there will be other things and other ceremonies that you're a part of, but I wanted to do something at city council and, and give them an opportunity also to, to thank you and appreciate you. You have anything to say?
Thank you. 30 years, it went pretty fast. It, I can't thank the mayor and the council and the commission enough for the support, and it's been awesome. But my family, you know, it, there was a lot of weekends and a lot of nights that I wasn't there for, you know, for those events, and if it wasn't for my wife taking care of that, I wouldn't have been able to make it. So, thank you.
All right, we are at number 10, and Patsy's already up there, Patsy Christie, our Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item is a request to rezone property at 1308 Stoltz Road. They're not rezoning the entire piece of property, they are separating an area out where the existing house is, is about .1, .719 acres, and the legal description on the ordinance reflects that location. They are requesting to rezone it from Agricultural District A1 to Low-Medium Density, Single Family Residential District SF2. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request, and the title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to Low-Medium Density, Single Family Residential District SF2, and declaring an emergency."
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Williams? Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
And as usual, the emergency clauses are included because there are pending actions on these pieces of property. The next item is a request to rezone 2.36 acres located on, at 697 Highway 265. The request is to rezone the property from General Commercial District C2 to Large Product Retail Sales District C6. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from General Commercial District C2 to Large Product Retail Sales District C6, and declaring an emergency."
Would this not be 264 Highway 265?
Oh, yeah, it is 264, you're right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So with that amendment, I move that the ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell? Williams? Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is the Spyglass Estate subdivision, I'm going to turn that over to the city attorney, I mean, the city engineer.
Do you want me to read the title of the ordinance?
I can.
The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting a new addition to the city of Springdale, Arkansas to be known as Spyglass Estate subdivision, a subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
Brad, are you going to remind everybody about this? I know we, we talked about this in committee a few weeks ago.
I think you all either tabled or denied this.
We tabled to tonight.
About four weeks ago?
Yeah.
Because it had a water, standing water on it, the water's been drained.
Okay, so they're in compliance now, and everything's ready to move forward, they're ready to start a couple of homes, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Move the ordinance speed up.
Second, do you know, are they going to build the houses closest to the ditch? Is that the ones that are planned first, or? I don't know. Because I understand it, it's a six lot subdivision, and they can build on all six of them.
But they're, they have to remain in compliance the whole time.
Correct.
So they'll, whatever grading they do will have to, the, the property, the development will have to remain in compliance, so.
So, so they drained it, is what you're saying, Brad?
Yes.
And was that the only, I mean, it's been a few weeks, was that the only issue? And I know that the standing water was the issue, but does that alleviate any future problems that we may have on this?
No, I think, I think everything, everything is planned, looks like it's, should work.
Yeah, the, the final grading permit will come together as they build the building pads.
Okay.
And I think that was the issue. That's usually, most of the time, the builder does that rather than the developer, and so that was the issue, that there was some standing water prior to the plat.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions or comments?
So I'd like to get it straight in my mind, how we are procedurally here. I thought this was in front of the council at one point in time.
You're right, I misspoke, I said committee, it was in front of the council. The Planning Commission forwarded it to council, and we wanted some, we wanted to, the council wanted to get some of these things addressed, and it brought back.
So.
Yes, when it was, when it was ready.
Okay, so this is bringing it back, it didn't go to committee? I'm trying to make sure I didn't miss something.
Yeah, no, the, earnest opinion, when we talked about it, we didn't think it had to go back to committee again.
Yeah, there, there, there were facts that weren't, weren't the way it came back, that they, they, they came out, they met engineering on site, they submitted a new grading plan to go with the subdivision, and they made onsite changes. I don't know if you've been out there, was it a week ago Friday that they, they did it, that they totally, all the issues I booed Mr. Lawson discussed at the meeting, those have all been addressed and resolved, is my understanding.
Is that right, Brad?
That's why it's back in front of you.
Yes, sir. It was high and dry this afternoon.
Okay, we have a, we got a motion and a second on this.
And just as a reminder, this is a, since this is a final plat, this is a minimum standards analysis, which believe that that's what the engineering's saying, that they now meet the minimum standards, they complied with the drainage issues that they had there before, and solved this before.
Right.
Just to be clear, if there is an issue down the road, it'll be on us to fix it, right?
No, I don't, I don't believe so at all. Depending on what the issue is, now, there, on the plat, there is a detention area that will eventually be maintained by the city pursuant to our.
There's a detention area, a detention pond that will be in a drainage easement, but the water was held in a low spot on the private property lots. So they'll fix that when they grade the lots out.
Okay.
And I don't want to hold this up much longer, but they were in compliance before to the minimum standards, so.
They, they were actually, with the, the standing water that was out there, that was not flowing into the, the, what would ultimately be the detention area, was a violation, and that's what they have since remedied, and that's why it's back in front of you.
The plan that the, that the Planning Commission forwarded was to the minimum standard.
Okay, that's what it was.
And it still is. The problem, if you remember, the problem was, we didn't know when this was going to get built, and how it was going to be, how it was going to be maintained until everything was graded. Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a request for a waiver of sidewalk improvements in conjunction with a single-family home at 1820 Graham Road. The Planning Commission reviewed this request, discussed with the applicant the possibility of payment in lieu of improvements for the sidewalk or a bill of assurance. He chose to go ahead and move forward with the waiver request itself. The, the Planning Commission recommends denial of the waiver request, which would be option one. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, curb, gutters, and sidewalks set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Mustafa and Kimberly Obadat in connection with 1820 Graham Road, a single-family dwelling."
Isn't that option two?
It'd be the denial.
Oh, yeah, the denial is option two, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's one ahead, and the, the applicant is here to.
Okay.
Present his side.
All right, good evening. I'm here to answer any questions, but I'd like to tell you a little bit about our property. So, we started with a five acre property, and we split one acre off to build a second house on there. Now, you, what you see here is the north side of the street, there's almost a 12 foot wide, I mean, if, it's hard to actually see, I forget, believe I forgot to show the picture of the other side of the road, but the other side of the road has a curb already, and then there's this ditch that's almost 12 feet wide. That's where we were building the house on the left side over there. Adding a sidewalk, that's 100, that's about 100 feet long, which is the width of the property. There's not going to be a sidewalk on the other side, because I own that rest of the property, I'm not going to put a sidewalk on there, it's, it's a farm. And then, the church next door owns 10 acres right next to us, and they're not putting a sidewalk either. So, our street seems to be, I think it's going to end up being a dead end, Graham Road, eventually, and I was just, we're surrounded by farmland, and, you know, I don't see a lot of need for a sidewalk, you know, when surrounded by farms. Now, the other thing is, if we do put a sidewalk on there, we're going to lose at least 12 feet of our property to the front for this ditch, and then the sidewalk will start. So we'd, we'd lose almost 17 feet of our property, right? Is it five feet wide, the sidewalk? Right, so, but the, is the ditch on my right of way? I don't, I mean, I don't understand. Yeah, so the road itself is actually on my property. The, the Graham Road, like, my property line is on the other side of Graham Road. So, we've lost the road and the ditch, and then whatever else that we're going to add to it. So that's why we're asking for a waiver.
What's, what's the curb and gutter, you, I'm seeing this picture, the curb and gutter on the other side of the street. What develop, when was that done? That was probably when it was in Bethel Heights, wasn't it?
That's when it was in Bethel Heights, and it's the property that Sweets runs on that quarter that is dire need of work.
Okay.
Patsy, when, when the future 612 or 412 bypass comes in through there, will it go across Graham Road and cut it off?
I think this portion will still be open, it'll go underneath it, and it'll go up to, you know, it goes around the corner and goes up to the north, it'll be stopped when it goes up to the north where the, where the road is now. So it won't be a, a road that goes all the way to Apple Blossom, but it has to stay open up to access those houses that are to the north of that.
Right.
When you go around the corner.
So to the, where his property is, to the east?
To the east, would, there's nothing that shows on the, on the plans that the road won't go over it, because we're putting Dixieland Road through there, and we're looking at working with the highway department on how all that's going to come across when they come through there. So I can't tell you that it's going to be shut off, but they have to maintain access to these pieces of property, it can't be shut off completely anyway.
Well, okay.
Looks like it might not be a through street.
Yeah, it won't be a through street, but it'll still access these properties, because it's their only means of access.
And do we have any plans of improving this portion of roadway?
Well, I can't tell you that we have any plans right now, but right now, we're all kind of waiting to see what happens with the Dixieland extension and the 412 bypass extension, and if there are any access roads that will go with this, to access properties, or, I mean, it's kind of all up in the air still, because we don't have final plans on any of that yet.
You, you understood, I, I think I was at the Planning Commission meeting while you were presenting this, and I know the bill of assurance came up, the payment in lieu of came up, those were things that you, you'd just rather not.
Well, I mean, obviously, if it's denied, I will have to choose one of those. Now, the other thing is, I bought this property about a year and a half ago, and I've improved it so much, and we just got our praise before we split it for the building, it doubled in, in the value. So what we're doing is, is right for the city, and we're actually taking care of our property, cleaning it up, and making sure that we don't do anything to either lower property value of any of our neighbors, or actually make it unpleasant to look at. So what we're doing is in, obviously in our best interest, but also in the best interest, interest of the city. Adding a sidewalk is just going to be in an odd spot that's not going to be, that's not going to look good for our property or any of the surrounding area. We're surrounded by cows, literally, that, we have, you know, farmlands all over our property.
Right.
So, and we're, we're going to lose a lot. But either way, the reason we're asking for a waiver is, we have plans to make that 100-foot property facing the road look really, really great, and I think the sidewalk will just get in the middle of it and ruin it. Plus, we're building this house without the help of a bank or anything, and that's going to add a lot of cost to us, though.
I guess the, the problem for everybody, you know, everybody tries to look in a crystal ball, and, and, and this one, I mean, that area is going to change a lot. And so that's where we're kind of, you know.
And, and, you know, to be honest, I, I own the four acres next to it as well, so I'm not adding a sidewalk, because we're, we're, you know, we're, we're working on other things, and we don't really need the sidewalk on a farm, but it's going to start and, and on our property, and it's just not going to connect to anything else.
Patsy, do, do we know where the right of way, how much right of way is there from the, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, I know there have been times, even recently, where if we, you know, because the question comes up, is the city ever going to do a road improvement there? And, and sometimes we'll, for a, for a donation of right of way, you know, we, we would consider that, that, that's.
This is kind of a unique piece, because it wasn't in the city of Springdale before. It appears from the survey he showed us, and we haven't really looked at it, the, the entire road is on his piece of property. The edge of the right of way goes to the, to the curb on the other side. I don't know with the Sweets' property, if there was some additional that was dedicated for that, because we don't have a set of those plans, and even if we do there, so they haven't been, you know, they haven't been resubmitted, so I can't tell you the situation with the road right now. I, the survey he showed, shows it one way, but I haven't verified any of that yet.
Okay.
And he did split the piece of property so he could put a second house on it. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
It's going to look a lot better than Sweets' property, property, I'll tell you that much.
Yeah.
So, Patsy, are we only talking about sidewalk? What about the other improvements?
With the single-family, uh, house being built, they're only required to do the sidewalk, dedicate the right-of-way if it's already there, and they're not required to do street improvements, it's only sidewalks that's left.
Is this zoned, is this zoned agricultural still?
No, we rezoned it to SF one.
SF one.
And they wrote, rezoned it to SF one because putting a second structure on it, they couldn't meet the minimum lot size or the minimum frontage to put two structures on it, so the property was rezoned. Okay?
I guess, I guess I'm not real sure why, why the planning commission recommended against it. Is, is the thinking that we're gonna have sidewalk all down that road someday, or, or what?
Well, as, as the mayor just said, this, this is an area that's in transition of things that are going on with the six-twelve bypass, you know, we've got some, uh, commercial property going on to the north, I think we're gonna see some other commercial, commercial developments in this piece of property, in this area. The property to the south is already zoned commercial. I think we're gonna see some changes in there, uh, unless there's a reason why it can't be done, or the, the planning commission doesn't recommend, uh, approval of very many waivers, unless it's way out in the middle of nowhere.
And unless there's physical.
Right, right.
Reasons that it's, would be very difficult to do.
The whereabouts, um, on Graham Road, is the road gonna intersect or go over, where's all that construction gonna take place for?
Well, wagon, or, um, Dixieland Road will go to the east of this, quite a ways to the east of it.
Okay.
The, uh, four-twelve bypass is to the north of it, but Graham Road will be affected when the, when the road goes through. I don't think either one of those projects actually touched this piece of property.
They don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so equipment and things like that will not be traveling on, on this road?
The theory is, yes, they are not supposed to be, because we have that ordinance that dictates how they, how they get to and from the construction sites.
Make a motion for option one.
Second.
And, that's to grant the full waiver, right? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to grant the waiver. Uh, option one, or, uh, approve the resolution, option one. Any other questions or comments? Anyone else in the room? Kay Denise?
Fugirous?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Carries seven one.
Okay, thanks, sir.
So I got the waiver?
I think you did.
Awesome. I wasn't sure which one is option one or two.
I voted wrong on those before, when I get votes, sometimes I got mixed up, but yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, item eleven, finance committee and chairman Jeff Watson.
Mayor, I was absent, uh, Tuesday night, I think Amelia handled that, if she doesn't mind.
No, I don't mind.
Okay, Amelia?
Um, on eleven A, we have, um, a condemnation lawsuit, um, it's, do I go ahead and read the resolution? Or, it's a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle a condemnation lawsuit wherein Miguel Garcia is defendant, forwarded from committee with a recommendation for approval.
This is, yeah, this is, uh, uh, on the Harbor Avenue project, this is actually a property at, where the new harbor's gonna come through, Forty Street. It was a full-taking, as Mr. Lyle stated at, at committee. The city's estimate of comp, just compensation was a hundred-and-fifteen thousand, and they've offered to settle for a total of a hundred-and-thirty-three, which is eighteen thousand, of new funds, which, uh, after discussing with the mayor, we thought was, uh, reasonable. That's why it was brought before committee, and it was forwarded with recommendation for approval.
Move, resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion or comment? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugirous?
Yes ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
And then eleven B.
You want me to talk about that for just a second, and then we'll, we'll, I'm, I'm gonna ask for a resolution, I'm gonna entertain a resolution to, to table that, uh, or motion, yeah, to table that resolution. We didn't, uh, we didn't receive the, the language for the, uh, for the resolution we need, uh, in time tonight, and, um, I'm not happy about that, but, uh, I'm just gonna ask you to table that, uh, until the next council meeting. Frank, we're gonna be okay on that if, as, as far as the equipment, we'll just have to, um, we're, we're gonna have to have some hard conversations with this company that we have engaged to help us navigate through the American Rescue Plan funds, and, uh, because they're, they've, I don't, I don't, it doesn't seem to me they're being very responsive, and, uh, we'll, we'll let you know how that goes, but, uh, but, until then, we will have the resolution in two weeks, uh, for you to, for you to approve for the, for the police equipment and the cars.
Table to February eighth?
Table to February eighth?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table. Uh, roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you, Amelia. Uh, yeah, Ernest, I'm gonna turn this number twelve over to you.
This is a resolution authorizing the city of Springdale's participation in the hazard mitigation plan of Benton County, Arkansas. Uh, I'll let the mayor elaborate, but, uh, in essence, every, as you see on page in the red, it's page twenty-one of your packet, it shows all the various municipalities and cities that are, uh, participating in this mitigation plan, which allows us to seek FEMA reimbursement in certain instances, uh, requires us to pass a resolution in order to make that happen.
These also, these, uh, this hazard mitigation plan, uh, we have found out, since Washington County has not yet updated theirs, and it's been over a year, Colby, right? And, um, uh, if, if we were to have an issue where we needed to apply for FEMA grants, uh, they'd get kicked out right at the beginning, because Washington County does not have a current hazard mitigation plan. Uh, so we'll, uh, decided to call them out at a council meeting, so, uh, we'll, uh, Benton